Welcome. Good evening. I now officially call to order our Board of Commissioners' regular scheduled meeting. Thank you all for joining us and being here tonight. We have a packed room and we love it when we have a packed room. That means good things are happening and exciting things right there. So, welcome to all of you. First order of business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. I've asked Gabe Bradley, our Solway Superintendent, to lead us in our invocation. You'll be hearing more about Gabe a little bit later this evening. And I've asked Miles Barber to lead us in our pledge of allegiance this evening too. And Miles is a young man and she'll be hearing more a little bit later this evening also. So, if you will, please stand.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we come to you as humble as we know how God was saying. Thank you for just waking us up this morning, Lord Jesus. Lord, we say thank you because you've been so good to us and how you have kept us from the beginning of the year to this present time. God, we say thank you because you have been so gracious and mercy to us, and we know it was only you, Lord. Lord, we thank you for shelter and food on the table and clothes on our back, God. We thank you for a job to be able to come to, Lord God. God, I say thank you for just who you are again. God, we ask that you, as our children, get ready to venture out into the beginning of the new school year, God, the middle school and the elementary and the preschool and the high school students, and then the younger adults that are venturing out to be in college, God, that you cover them with your grace and mercy. Keep them like only you can. And we will carefully give your name the praise and the glory. We don't take these things for granted our next breath. And God, we ask you, Lord, as we do our meeting tonight, God, and we get ready to venture home, God, let your traveling grace and mercy be with each and every one under the sound of my voice until we meet again, God, and allow the chain not to be broken. And we will carefully say thank you. In the mighty name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Public religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single.
Thank y'all. This time I asked Assistant Town Manager Seymour to review the meeting protocol for public participation as it relates to this meeting. Jim, good evening.
Mayor Board, good evening. Glad to be with you. Tonight's Town Board meeting is both in person and live streamed on the town's YouTube channel and Facebook page. Tonight's meeting contains a public comment period and one scheduled public hearing. The public is invited to comment in person. When it is the appropriate time, Mayor Massengill will call on those wishing to address the Town Board. All attendees that have appeared in person to address the Town Board during the public comment period should provide your name and address on the green registration sheet by the podium prior to the public comment period beginning. All attendees that have appeared in person to address the Town Board during a scheduled public hearing should provide your name and address on the white registration sheet by the podium. We ask that all those wishing to address the Town Board during the public comment period or a scheduled public hearing to begin their comments by clearly stating their name and address for the public record. The public is asked to keep all comments to three minutes so that all that wish to speak can be heard in a timely manner. To be respectful of those that may have different views on matters addressed by the Town Board, we ask that all in attendance respected the quorum of the meeting by refraining from clapping, making loud noises, and generally showing support or displeasure for comments made during the public comment period or public hearings. Police Chief Smith will be asked to escort from the boardroom anybody not respecting the process, and it is the discretion of the mayor as the presiding officer of the meeting to continue the public comment and/or public hearing period if the meeting protocol is not followed. This concludes the protocols for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Jim. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from the August 4th, 2025 Town Board of Commissioners' regular scheduled meeting. Any changes or additions to the minutes? If not, we can entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor Massengill, I move that we approve the minutes of the August 4th, 2025 Town Board of Commissioners' regular scheduled meeting as printed and presented.
Second. Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First presentation tonight, we have item 4A. This is a presentation in recognition of Miles Barber. And I'll be speaking more information about Miles down front. Miles, you want to come join me up here? So, this young man right here is nine years old, resident of Fuquay Varina, goes to Ballantyne Elementary School, and enjoys playing a variety of town sports. Plays flag football and basketball and baseball. Is that clear, right? And I've seen him on the basketball court. In fact, I know, he's right over here again. There's two gentlemen over here. Charles, right there is a coach, and Gabe is a coach. Where did Gabe move to? Right, right there. We play basketball with them on the courts and have fun too. I know you recognize those two men right there. And so, Miles had set a goal for playing golf. And his goal, two years ago, he went and played in a world championship golf tournament and got 60th place. 60 is pretty good, 60th in the world right there. So, the following year, he said, I can go do this again, and I can do, I can do better. He got 30th in the world right there. Still, pretty impressive right there. I know I would be probably three billionths down the line in my golf game, but 30th in the world right there. So, he said, okay, I'm going back to this tournament this year. I'm going to score, and I'm going to aim for 15th. Well, he didn't get 15th right here, and he got number one nine-year-old in all of America, all of America. So, he got number one in all of America and number three in the world. Best golfer in the entire world is a nine-year-old right here in Fuquay Varina, attending our local schools and a resident here in town. And so, so very proud of Miles. And so, when I heard that, I wanted to have Miles to our board meet tonight and be able to recognize him. He has with him here today. Has here with him today his parents right here, and Josh and Laura, thank you for supporting Miles. Miles shares with me how much it meant to him that they drove him to golf practice. And since he could, can you drive, Miles? Not yet. Not yet driving, but he will be driving soon. Other than just a golf club, driving the golf ball, that's right. But they have been very instrumental in helping him and providing for him, and great parents. And he has his aunt and uncle that are here tonight also. But Miles, we're so proud of you and so impressed with you right there that you're representing Fuquay Varina as the number one best golfer in America, the third best golfer in the entire world. And so, I want to present to you my mayor's coin right here because you are a dash more here in Fuquay Varina and representing Fuquay Varina very well. We're very proud of you, okay? Congratulations. Let's give Miles a round of applause. Take a family picture up here. Next presentation, item 4B, presentation of the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal, Fire Department ISO grade. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Fire Chief Jones, North Carolina State Fire Marshal Brian Taylor. Welcome, gentlemen. Chief, good evening. It's good to see you.
Good evening. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight with what we hope is wonderful news. If you will remember, last October, inspectors from the Office of the State Fire Marshal visited the Fire Department to inspect and evaluate all aspects of the department's operations, including staffing, equipment, prevention, and many other areas. This inspection, as part of the North Carolina Response Rating System, is used to assign a rating to the Fire Department, which in turn will be used to determine property insurance rates within the town limits and outside of the town limits. The ratings can range from 10, which is the worst, to 1, which is the best. And before the October inspection, the Fire Department had a rating of 2 inside the town limits and a rating of 4 in the areas outside of the town limits. Joining us tonight to present the results of that October visit are the North Carolina State Fire Marshal Brian Taylor. Chief Deputy State Fire Marshal Mike Williams. And our rating inspector, John Whitfield. Thank y'all for joining us tonight. But before I turn the presentation over to them, I would like to extend a few thank yous. First, to our Town Board and management staff, thank you for your unwavering support and your strategic investment in the Fire Department. Second, the other town departments, thank you for your assistance and support before and during the inspection. Next, I want to say thank you to the staff of Wake County Fire Services for their support, guidance, and suggestions as we prepare for the inspection. And joining us tonight from Wake County Fire Services is Deputy Director Joe Vendigni.
Joe?
And next, a big thank you to all of our Fire Department members, many of whom are here tonight, as you see, for their commitment to this community every day and their hand and their hard work in preparing for this inspection. And finally, a special thank you to Division Chief Justin Rivasstall.
Justin? Yeah, stand up, please. Maybe you stand with care.
Division Chief Justin Rivasstall, whose drill sergeant-like management of this project kept us focused on our goal of improvement. Now, I say all this without knowing what Chief Taylor is about to tell us, but no matter what the new ratings may be, I am blessed to lead a world-class Fire Department filled with some of the most dedicated and talented firefighters in the state, and I thank you for that opportunity. Now, I'll turn the presentation over to State Fire Marshal Brian Taylor.
Thank you. Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. And this is very exciting for not only your Fire Department but for your community. Our rating system here in North Carolina, we're one of the only or the only state in the country that actually evaluates any fire departments through the ISO rating less than 100,000 population. So, that benefit goes to your residents because of a timely rating inspection. It's important for us, when Commissioner Causey appointed me to this office almost eight years ago, it was a mission to reduce the time that departments are evaluated. There were departments not being evaluated for 20 years. Now, we're on a cycle of about every five years, and that benefit is directly to your taxpayers and insurance, people that pay insurance in your community. So, I am very pleased to bring for you tonight a rating that is the best in the country, not only the state of North Carolina, but the best in the country. The rating classification is from a 1 to 10 with 1 being the best. And I can tell you there's that Fuquay Varina has just achieved the 34th rating in the state of North Carolina of a Class 1 rating. There are less than 400 departments nationwide that achieve this class. What was amazing, I was just in Mississippi for a conference and discovered there that there was no one in the state of Mississippi that had a Class 1. So, it's very impressive. You know, the hard work that these men and women put into this, not only for the Fire Department, this is evaluation of the community. The rating classification is 10 points communication, 50 points of that is for the Fire Department, and 40 is for the water supply, in which, of course, that's either with your local water system, county water system. And of course, it takes your county communications and county Fire Marshal's office to achieve that rating. So, I applaud Chief Jones and the Fuquay Fire Department, and of course, for you all's commitment to support the local Fire Department. And what's important now is to maintain that rating. It's going to take a lot of work. It was a lot of work to get to this point, but it's going to take even more work to maintain that rating over the years. And so, our next evaluation from that would be five years. This rating will take place November 1. So, at this time, I would like to call the inspector up. John Anthony was the actual rating inspector, and just let him talk to you about his experience while doing the rating here in Fuquay Varina.
Thank you. First off, congratulations. And thank you, Mayor, Board, Council, for allowing and providing what they need to earn this grade. Not only, you know, for the equipment, the manpower, it's a very complex system, like Chief Taylor stated, and they excelled in every avenue of the system. He laid out the points to you. There's a total of over 105 points available. Your Fire Department was able to achieve over 99 of those points. That's a very strong grade and even a strong Class 1. So, not only did they achieve the Class 1, they almost blew it out of the water. So much so that it was delayed, Mr. Mayor. I think you were ready for some answers, but it was delayed. And I think that was ISO's way of wondering, hey, how did they score so good? But once again, congratulations, and thank you, Chief, Staff, Justin, I can't pronounce your last name. But thanks for making it easy. Probably one of the easiest surveys that I've ever had to participate in. So, they've made it a pleasure, and I wish they were all like that. Congratulations.
Let's give them a round of applause just right here.
We took a couple photographs, and yes, we do give some extra credit points. So, we did have, he spoke about 105, so the community risk reduction points. And your department does a great job with that here. We'll take pictures.
I was going to say a couple comments before I brag about this incredible Fire Department. I didn't mean to cut you off right there. I'm so sorry. As you know, I have been excited about this opportunity right here. And just as you mentioned just a moment ago, you know, good news travels, and we're excited about this. And so, where's our good news at? Our Fire Department? Look at these men and women here in our Fire Department tonight that are excited about this information. This entire board and our entire town is proud of you, Chief, for what your team has done right here. Going to a rating of 1 is, just as you said, the best that you can be. And I'm always bragging that we have the best Fire Department out there, and you have shown that right there. And so, I appreciate your entire team's hard work and the entire Town Board's support, y'all. And as you mentioned, equipment and a variety of factors go into it, but it's hard work. It's dedication by your department that makes a difference right there, Chief. And so, I would like to also present to you and the entire Fire Department, my mayor's coin, because we're very proud of y'all for what y'all have accomplished right here, Chief. And so, thank you for you and your entire departments.
Sir, thank you so much.
Everybody, yes, sir. Forward, we're about to turn.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item 3, presentation, recognition of North Carolina law enforcement accreditation. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Police Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Certainly is great to be here with you tonight. And before I start bragging on the Police Department, I just want to congratulate Chief Jones and his staff for that outstanding rating. And I certainly value the partnership that our agencies have. We work well together. We respect the Fire Department. I know they respect us. So, it's a good thing when you got two agencies that can work together as good as we do. So, big congratulations to you, Chief Jones, and your staff. Well, here we are again. Talk about another accreditation that we recently achieved. So, I am pleased to announce that this past Friday, the Fuquay Varina Police Department received its accreditation through the North Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, also known as NCLEA. This is a significant milestone for our department and for the town of Fuquay Varina as a whole. The process for this was similar to what I spoke about during the Calea presentation, as we had to, you know, complete several different processes such as review and comply with comprehensive set of professional standards covering all aspects of our operations, provide proofs of compliance, update and review policies and procedures. And then, we underwent a site evaluation, which included staff and community interviews, ride-alongs, and a thorough review of community service practices. And what I'm proud to share is that we completed this process in eight months and 21 days. So, we did this very fast. And it certainly was a testament to the professionalism, dedication, and teamwork from all of our staff. And we were the 10th agency in North Carolina to get this accreditation. So, something we're certainly proud of. But it didn't just happen overnight. Again, eight months. But I do want to recognize and thank Rosie Wagner, who was our accreditation specialist, for outstanding effort and dedication throughout this process. Rosie's leadership and organization were instrumental in guiding us to a successful accreditation. She came in, she mapped out the course and said, here's where you're at, here's where you need to be. It was the same thing with Calea as it was with NCLEA, and she said, now we need to get it done. And so, we didn't dare step out of line. Rosie would bring us back, but I tell her kind of jokingly, but she certainly is a gem. Without her, this process would have been very difficult. So, she's got a very big workload. As we work through these accreditations and maintain them, these are not a one-and-done thing. NCLEA, we recertify every three years. Calea is every four years. And the League of Municipalities Risk Assessment is every three years. So, it's a continuous process. I would also like to acknowledge Captain Michael McDonald. He's not here tonight. But he served in our professional standards role for most of this process and worked closely with Rosie to achieve this important milestone. And then, finally, I'd like to express my gratitude to the entire Police Department staff for their hard work and contributions throughout this accreditation process. This accomplishment was truly a team effort. This accomplishment builds on our past successes. I have mentioned that back in 2022, we completed the North Carolina League of Municipalities Management Risk Management Assessment, and just this past March, Calea. So, these here, these achievements demonstrate our ongoing commitment to excellence, accountability, and continuous improvement in law enforcement. and continuous improvement in law enforcement. So you might ask, why all three, Chief? Why, why do you go through all three of these things? Well, the reason is because each one touches on various things. So Calea touches on best practices nationally to make sure we're in client, in compliance with the best practices across the nation. NCLEA focuses on North Carolina specific things, making sure our policies are in compliance with North Carolina law, procedure, things like that. And then, of course, the North Carolina League of Municipalities Risk Assessment focuses just on that, risk management and liability. So all three are important and I don't know of another agency around here that has all three. So we are committed to this. We are committed to bringing the best and professional policing we can to Fuquay Varina. And so we are going to continue to maintain these things. So thank you for allowing us to be here to present tonight. We are certainly proud of this award and the the other two that we have. So I'm going to let Rosie hold this certificate tonight. Thank you.
You know, in my book, that's what we, got loud on me, Scott, right there. My book, this is what we call a trifecta. When you have North Carolina certification, the entire nation's certification, and the League of Municipalities, all three right there, absolute best that you can have. That's incredible and it takes a lot of hard work for the men and women in our police department to be able to achieve that. And Rosie, you're following along with the policies and going through all the paperwork and what's required. And it's not just paperwork, it's training, it's standards, it's things that have to be done. And so Chief, your entire department has worked very hard for this and we are so proud of y'all here in Fuquay Varina. Often are bragging about how we are one of the top safest communities in North Carolina. And so thank y'all for your very hard work on that. It means a lot to our citizens right here. And Chief, I would like to present to you my mayor's coin for you and your police department for what your hard work and what you've accomplished right here. We're proud of you, sir.
Thank you.
Item four D, recognition of Gabe Brierley, APWA NC, Larry Wigman, Man of the Year Award winner. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Public Works Director Stevenson. Tracy, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Board. I am thrilled to be here tonight for this topic. We're here to honor Gabe Brierley for his achievement in being named the American Public Works Association North Carolina Chapter, Man of the Year. It's Larry Wigman Award. It is for professionals that have more than ten years' experience. Of course, if you know that Gabe, he's been here, well, I think twenty-nine going on thirty. He's done pretty much every role that we have in the sanitation department. He is our solid waste guy. He's been here for the launch of our recycling program. We took that in-house. Pretty much everything we've done from a solid waste standpoint, Gabe's been an integral part of. So he was nominated by his peers to, for this award. And at the most recent APWA conference in Beaufort, North Carolina, which he and Charles Baker attended representing the town, they awarded him with this, with this prestigious award. It's basically the biggest award you have in North Carolina for, for solid waste. And so I would love to have Gabe come forward and, and have him show off his, his award. And thank you all for the opportunities that we have to go to conferences and to be able for Gabe to be recognized in this way. He is an outstanding employee, is an outstanding person, and I consider him not a, not a coworker, but a friend.
That's right. Gabe, Gabe has worked very, very hard in our sanitation department, Gabe. And you being recognized by the entire state of North Carolina as being the man of the year, that's impressive. And this is a great man that works hard for Fuquay Varina. It's got incredible moral character and does an incredible job. He's always working hard for our citizens and his entire department right there. And Gabe, myself and the entire town of Fuquay Varina appreciate that. And you being recognized deserve this honor very, very much. And so I'm proud to say that we have the best employee in all of North Carolina, winning that award right there that's deserved, well deserved. Nobody else could deserve that more with amongst your peers out there. And so my friend, Gabe, we are so proud of you for, for what you do in Fuquay Varina. Gabe is a lifelong resident, pretty much, of Fuquay Varina too. And so we've got to serve together on committees and know each other real well. And so I'm proud to call Gabe my friend and be able to recognize him here tonight. And Gabe, I would like to present to you my mayor's coin because you are a Dashmore and we appreciate what you're doing here in Fuquay Varina. Congratulations.
First, give an honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I just want to say, in the day we had the meeting at the conference, it was so many other people that was well deserved for that position and that honor. But I am totally humbled by it because I know I could not have done none of this if it weren't for the Lord. I thank God for the opportunity for working with the town and being here and then being able to be a part. I've always been, I thank God for my friend, my brother, Charles Baker. Makes things a lot easier when you got somebody, a prayer partner in, in there with you, you know. And I thank God for my director, who always tries to set you up for success and never for failure. And my team, I know they're not here tonight, but those twenty-one men that worked with me to keep the town clean, I couldn't do it by myself with service, servicing seventeen-plus thousand people. It was, it's that entire team that helps me, Charles Baker and James Jordan and all of the public work staff. I, I just don't feel like I can take all that credit by myself. And I thank God for you, Mayor Blake, and the commissioners and the directors and the town managers and everything. And I just thank God for it, you know, because I, like I said, the next breath we take would not be if it was not for the Lord Jesus. And I honor that through him. Thank y'all.
Okay, everybody's happy.
You know, it's not every night in Fuquay Varina you get to have such a great night of great presentations and recognize some of my great achievements, achievements right here in our town. And that's something we're very proud of in Fuquay Varina. Anytime we can recognize these incredible things that are happening in our community. Next on our agenda will be the public comment period. At this time, the deputy town clerk will call on individuals that are in attendance and have registered to address the town board prior to the meeting. The public comment period is a time for the public to address the town board about any matter that is not the subject of a scheduled public hearing. Those speaking are asked to begin by clearly stating your name and address for the public record. Please limit your comments to three minutes or that all who wish to speak may be heard in a timely manner. Eva, do you have anybody signed up?
Yes, Mayor, Ms. Emily Holloway.
Emily, welcome. Come on up.
Good evening, Emily Holloway, three twelve Anter Road, right down the street. I'm coming tonight to speak to you about the natural aspects of Fuquay Varina. And first, I just wanted to let you know that right now there is a chimney swift viewing of the bird at the old middle school. It's hosted by the Wake Audubon Society, which includes some local town members. My husband and I used to watch the chimney swifts when they would come into the mill. There was a chimney there and there's one on Raleigh Street. Those places are both gone now. So it's a pretty big deal to have the Audubon Society in these chimney swifts and they're hoping to save the tower that they roost in. But that's also going to be, hopefully the town will support the, the saving of that with the Wake County School Board. It's going to have to be a, a deal to save that chimney so they can still roost there. But my main reason for coming tonight is to talk about the cutting down of so many trees in our town. I know we are recognized as a tree city USA and I would like to know who is the person who is like keeping that going? Because I know Parks and Recs, they do the Arbor Day celebration. But most recently, over here on Wake Chapel Road, where the Wake Chapel Square development is being built on Broad Street, I watched as three majestic heritage trees were cut down in an afternoon. The lot site had been cleared except for these three beautiful trees. They were easily a hundred years old. They were deciduous trees. They met the qualifications for a heritage tree. The workmen were eating lunch under them. They parked their trees in the shade. I was so happy because I thought they were going to be saved and incorporated into that development. No, they cut them down in a matter of hours. The town has rules in place to protect these trees to see that they're not removed. I don't have time to read through all of them, but I'm sure you do. S nine fourteen oh six outlines everything. I don't think they followed all the rules when they did that development. The development was proposed June ninth. It was approved July thirteenth and they began building it July twenty-seventh. They didn't even spell the name Plute Home correctly. It was spelled P L U T E on the deed for the development. So it just seemed very rushed. I think the town needs to be taking more time. I'm concerned about the development at Perfoy and Honeycutt with all those grocery stores going in, the residential area. There don't seem to be any heritage trees there, but there's a large cops of trees on the corner which provide a nice green space. It could be incorporated into the development plan. All over town, there are for sale signs for undeveloped tree-filled spaces, I would hope, going forward. The town would make it a priority to work with the developers in keeping green space, just like all the trees at four oh one were cut down for that Target shopping center. And I hate to see that this is going to be the norm. The town of Fuquay has so many rules, like one thing, the town of Fuquay desires to develop in a manner that allows development in harmony with the natural environment and protect existing vegetation when and where practical to improve the quality and character of the town. The clear cutting and protection of heritage tree regulations also works in unison with improving air quality, stormwater management, and economic value to property and the environment of town. There's just a lot of requirements about cutting down these trees. It's all in our town thick guidelines. And I would hope that the town would moving forward, try and save some more of these trees before they're gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Eva, do you have anybody else signed up?
We do not.
Okay. Public hearings are a time for the petitioner to present his or her requests and for the public to give input and voice or favor or opposition to the request. If you wish to speak and are physically in attendance, please step forward to the podium one at a time, provide your name and address on the registration log at the podium, and clearly state your name and address for the public record. We ask all those addressing the town board to please limit your comments to three minutes or that all who wish to speak may be heard in a timely manner. Public hearing, item seven A zoning map amendment, Mohammed Kayali, four twenty-six and four twenty-eight, Longfellow Street, REZ dash two zero two four dash one four. More information about this agenda will be presented by Planning Director Davidson.
Thank you so much. I'm submitting the agenda abstract and supporting documents and the official records of the town. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider a requested zoning map amendment for a total of point one six nine acres located at four twenty-six and four twenty-eight Longfellow Street from the residential low-density zoning district to the town center residential zoning district. The subject property consists of two lots from the original Lincoln Heights subdivision dating back to nineteen forty-five. The land development ordinance defines the lots as lots of records. The property owner is permitted by right to construct one single-family home on each lot with reduced setbacks. The requested TCR zoning and proposed townhouse development will bring the properties into compliance with current codes and standards and incorporate zoning conditions which require specific facade elements, including a covered front entry or front porch, glazing in the front door, and no vinyl siding, instead of developing under the non-conforming lot of record allowance. At the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval. At the January sixth town board meeting, the town board voted to close the public hearing and table consideration until the January twenty-first meeting, which was canceled due to the weather. Following the January sixth regular town board meeting, staff discussed with the petitioner their commitment to the town's code of ordinances for maintaining a clean and orderly site during construction. The petitioner verbally agreed that he will maintain the construction site and follow all state and local regulations. At the February third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, following discussion amongst the board members, the town board took no action on this item. The petitioner has requested a new public hearing tonight in hopes of receiving a final town board determination. The suggested motion tonight is to approve REZ twenty twenty-four fourteen, a zoning map amendment at four twenty-six and four twenty-eight Longfellow Street from the residential low-density zoning district to the town center residential zoning district as it is reasonable and in the best interest of the public for the reasons identified by management and staff. The petitioner is here tonight to answer any questions and I'm available also.
So Director Davidson, this is coming back to the board and it is a public hearing. This is due to the board, took no action on it previously. And so looking for some kind of action taken tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Any questions for staff? We're open to public hearing. Okay, thank you, Director Davidson. Hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of a zoning map amendment? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor of the zoning map amendment?
My name Mohammed Kayali and I'm the owner and I'll be here to answer any questions. So I, and I'm in the favor of this, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the zoning map amendment? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the zoning map amendment? Nobody here to speak in opposition to the zoning map amendment? Hearing is now closed. Any discussion by the board? If not, it was the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Mayor, so move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Next on an item of our agenda is the consent agenda. What is the board's pleasure on the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, hold on. Approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and remove item I for discussion and approve item J and K and L.
Second. All right, my motion is saying to approve all consent agenda items, removing item I. We have a motion and a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay, national funds, opioid settlement supplemental agreements for additional funds, Purdue and Sackler, small manufacturers. You have specific questions?
Yes.
Presentation?
Yes, to the assistant manager, Matthews. In regards to the settlement, I know that Wake County has six, sixty-seven point seven million dollars and that money is to be dispersed to each municipality. Part, part of the, the process for, for doing that because of the different milieu of, of responses to the opioid. Part of the process for doing that because of the different milieu of responses to the opioid settlements such as prevention, intervention, treatment. Part of what they say in the process is to have a community advisory board and also to do a community survey. Are we putting ourselves in position to receive these funds? That's the first thing. The second thing is that there were 39 proposals and that have already been submitted. And have we as a municipality moved in that direction to submit a proposal to receive these funds?
So, under the memorandum of agreement that was adopted at the time of the initial wave of opioid settlements, Fuquay Varina adopted that memorandum of agreement as many municipalities across the state did because there was a statewide formula that was negotiated through the state attorney general's office with the opioid manufacturers and distributors for that first settlement. The latter settlements, in this case, the two before you tonight, have followed that same pattern, which follows the Wake County opioid settlement funding plan. And so they have a countywide-based advisory committee that includes representation from the municipalities across the county for how to best make use of those funds for addressing the impacts of opioids on the communities. And so in some cases, it's for intervention, it's for treatment. And so the town itself has not been a direct recipient. We have supported Wake County's efforts since they are more at the front of the human services space. And so we've supported their efforts. We've continued to work with them as our police and fire department in counter overdoses in the field and things of that nature.
Okay. One of the things I'd just like to offer for discussion is that to put ourselves in a position to receive those funds, part of the recommendation was that there be created a community advisory board. And as a matter of timing, I think it would be important for us to move in that direction so that when the funds do come available, we will be in a position to receive that kind of funding. Because I think it's crucial that we, as a community, be able to address the issues surrounding substance abuse and opioid addiction here in Fuquay Varina. So I'd like to recommend that at some point, we develop a collaborative committee that will put ourselves in a position, when these funds are available, to receive those funds or to go after those particular funds. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. To the board's attention as well.
We'll be happy to have further discussion with the board and with our partners at the Southern Regional Center of the best way to accomplish that.
One other comment. Can we have a citizens committee comprised of members of the community as part of that advisory board? Or does it have to come from the Southern Regional Center? Can it be something that we do from the standpoint as a town internally, as opposed to the Southern Regional Center?
So Wake County has a specific role under the legal settlement and memorandum of agreement.
Okay.
For direction of these funds, certainly the board could create an advisory committee anytime you deemed it appropriate.
Okay.
But the dispersment of funds flows through Wake County under the memorandum of agreement.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Motion to approve or no?
I approve. Motion is approved, yes, sir.
Motion on?
There's some other comments, but I'm okay with that. Thank you.
I'll second his motion to approve.
All right, my motion is second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion? All right, no opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Administrative report, item 10A, presentation and resolution wastewater asset management plan. More information about this item will be presented by Public Utilities Director Wagner and Withers Ravinell. Mike, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in the spring of 2022, we received an American Rescue Plan grant for an asset inventory assessment of our wastewater collection system. Took about several months to get an approved work plan from the state. Ultimately, we contracted with Withers Ravinell to complete this assessment. And part of that assessment is, part of the grant is that we need to present to you what we've been doing over the last 18 months and our asset management plan that we hope to move forward with. I want to introduce Nina Caraway with Withers Ravinell, who's going to go over this presentation.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be presenting in front of you all tonight. I wish it'll be as exciting as junior golf or firefighters. Unfortunately, we're going to be talking about sewer, but I'll try to make it interesting. So like what Mike said, the town received a $400,000 grant courtesy of the American Rescue Plan. This was sort of a spun up version of an existing grant program with the state called AIAs, which is an Asset Inventory and Assessment Grants where you do a lot of great data collection, data analysis, and it ultimately ends with an asset management plan. And the purpose of this study was to look at your sewer system in terms of its near-term and long-term needs as a joint asset management and master plan. You all have a very unique system. You drain to two different sewer basins. Each come with its own challenges. You all have had some very interesting and very rapid growth over the past few years. Every time I drive down here to meet with Mike and his team, I look around and I'm like, oh, that's new. That wasn't there before. So the 18-month study of this was really quite a challenge because it was like hitting a moving target. Every time we'd meet with Mike and his team, he'd say, okay, update this as part of your study. But because of that, we rose to the challenge and it made for a very fulfilling and rewarding study that we hope would be meaningful to you all. So, from the executive summary, one of our favorite asset management questions is, was this built before or after the moon landing? Here we are in this wonderful historic downtown. But because it's historic, underneath our feet, all of these pipes that we don't tend to think about because they're under our feet, they're old, they need rehab and replacement. And from the results of the study, nearly 5% of these sewer assets, we would say, are in poor conditions. Five of your now 30-plus lift stations have exceeded their life expectancy. Because you all have very rapid growth and a lot of potential for how that growth can expand, there are some key decisions that can be made with regards to what kind of assets go in to support your growth, whether it's gravity or pump stations. Oh, no. What'd I hit?
We're getting the correct presentation.
Okay, I was going to say, I was trying to like go off of your slides, so, okay. All right, well, this was basically, I already kind of went over this outline already, but to go a little bit more in detail. Yeah, I already gave you some of that planning context, what an AIA is, and then what we did as part of this study. And then I'll work through some of the improvements that we recommend and then what the current and future projects would be. So some of my Withers compatriots have presented to you all before. And we heard at some point that the town talks about the Fuquay Varina bus and that they need to have bright headlights to see where they're going. And with this rapid growth comes revenue, and that's great, and we want to plan for it. But because of these older sewer assets, there is this rainfall component, which has a fancy term called rainfall-derived infiltration and inflow, or RDII. And I have another slide which goes into more detail about this. But what this rainfall infiltration is doing is that it's taking away your capacity in your sewer system away from your current and future paying customers. So like I said before, the AIA, here's some standardized language about what it is. It's normally a smaller amount, usually for smaller or distressed utilities. But thanks to that American Rescue Plan, it got a bump up to $400,000. This is a joint asset management plan and master plan. It focuses on not only the current state of your sewer assets, but its future state. What condition are your assets in now? And what condition are your current assets going to be at various planning horizons? But the overlap is that it's data-driven. There's a lot of collaboration involved and it leads to an intelligent and well-designed capital improvement plan. So just as a very high-level overview, there was a lot of great data analysis, data collection, working with members of Mike's team all the way from the GIS department to the guys who run and operate the pump stations. One of my favorite pictures as part of the manhole inspection process, their crew found a hidden manhole in someone's front yard that was disguised because of a decorative well. So with your permission, I might be using this image for other sewer inspection projects.
How'd you find it, when it's hidden as a decorative well? Did you track the camera at the treasure line and come up to it?
Mike, do you remember?
It shouldn't, it should be here, but this looks like a well.
And then you opened the lid and you saw what was in that well you don't drink? Nobody tried to drink it, right? So is the wellhouse still on it?
It was last week.
It's a decoration in the front yard. It makes it look pretty. It's kind of like, you know, often you see people on Duke Energy Transformers do art and things like that. We started doing a variety of art on manholes too.
All right, so one of the big parts of this study is that we visited every single one of the then 30 pump stations. And I'm going to give you all a very simple hydraulics lesson. Don't go off trying to take the PE on me, but here's some pump station theory. A lot of pump stations have two pumps. What pumps do? They push water from A to B, usually up a hill. If one pump is rated for five and the pump next to it, identical, also rated for five. Ideal conditions, when they work together, it should be 10. And then if there's another pump station next to it, and they both go to the same pipe, also rated for 10, when they both run, should be 20. Unfortunately, there aren't ideal conditions. And this trio of pump stations on the screen right now, when we went out and tested those, we didn't get five plus five equals 10. We would get five plus five equals six. And then we would get pump station A and pump station B definitely not adding up to 20. More like what should have been 10 plus 10 equals 20 was 10 minus one equals nine. They were fighting against each other. And this was all because it was hilly. It's really hard to take care of and maintain really long force mains. And especially when you got basically force mains spaghetti where they're interconnected and it's just, it was just not ideal conditions. And this is something that, you know, Mike and his team, they knew about. But it took us doing those drawdown tests and coming up with these numbers to actually just put just some hard facts to something that they knew about. And so this is one of the regions, this Sunset Regional Pump Station that's connected to this High Grove and Stone Creek area. One of the CIP projects is replacing all of this with a more intelligently designed and upgraded regional pump station. So you replace three small ones that aren't behaving well with a larger one that is designed well for the local area and the incoming growth. Like on that bus slide, you have this presence of what's known as rainfall infiltration. Now, we've had a very wet summer. This is why you can't swim in Jordan Lake or go tubing on the noose right now. So you all aren't unique that when it rains, it gets into your sewer systems because they're old, they need repair. And if it rains too much, it backs up and it ends up in our streets in waterways. So, pardon me. So that's why in this image right here, you have the standard flow. And that's what's coming out of your paying customers on a nice dry day. But then you have this rainfall-influenced flow and that's what's backing up your sewers and taking away capacity from your current and potential future customers. We also did hydraulic modeling. So just like there is a hurricane coming, not quite to our coast, but just enough to be a little bit concerned about. All of that is based off of really great and well-defined weather models. So what we did for the town is that we created a supermodel based off of standard hydraulic equations, but calibrated to all of the great data that we collected as part of this study. So once you create, design, and calibrate a tool like this, then you can run it to help define where are my current issues in my system? What are projects I need to address that? And then based off of anticipated growth, what future projects do I need? And that's the part of the master plan. So basically what this slide is showing, you don't have to squint at the numbers, is that we have a process for the urban service area, which was the domain of our study. For every single parcel for this USA for the next 50 years, has a decision associated with it. Is there a known development? A known number of units and a known anticipated flow, take care of that first. Where there's potential for a known development based off of your future land use plan, then that's something that through coordination with Mike's group, we assigned a timeline to it of, well, this is rated for single-family use and we think that this will probably come in by 10 years, 20 years. And then lastly, we did a large bookkeeping exercise in coordination with the GIS staff on what is also on septic. And so if there's future projects, new gravity sewer, could some existing septic be converted as well and increase the town's revenue? So, pardon me. A lot of this project was about using this data-driven model, looking at where your rivers are, looking at elevation, where your current users are and where potential users would be, and optimizing your sewer network. So as of now, you're looking at developments just one at a time. What's immediately needed to get that development connected in? But now with the master plan, you can look at all of the developments at once, their timeline, and start thinking about, well, rather than five developments and five new pump stations, could there instead be a more intelligently designed gravity sewer? Use gravity to get those flows to the larger collection system rather than having to spend all that manpower, all the extra electricity, all of the extra chemicals, and who knows what happens when, you know, you have like a brownout on a really hot day? And, you know, a gravity sewer still works when the power's out. A pump station doesn't, for example. So, so thinking about the future state of your system, you have all of this great growth, all of this interest, and just being intelligent about your planning of where is this development going in my system? Where do I know about the potential of what's around it? And what is the better long-term plan for this particular sub-basin of these two larger basins you have for your system? So this is what y'all's current service area looks like. Very, very spread out, those little purple lines, those are all of your force mains, daisy chaining your current pump stations together. We're right there in the middle of that big pocket of that gray and green downtown area. So for the 2035 planning horizon, this takes care of a pesky wastewater treatment plant, the Brighton Forest, I'm sure you all have probably heard about it. Comes up with a CIP project to replace that. You start to see more developments fill in. By 2035 or 2045, more expansion, more gravity sewer, less pump stations. by twenty thirty-five or twenty forty-five, more expansion, um, more gravity sewer, less pump stations. And then in fifty years, which, um, you know, it's, it's really crazy to think about, but these are the kind of questions you need to start asking in anticipation. If you were to fill out this full urban service area, what is the optimized design for your sewer system? And so right now you have thirty-plus pump stations. What this design does, it gets you down to just seven. Um, and some of that you can't avoid because you have pockets of your system that flow north into the carry area, for example. And what we also proposed was a new treatment plant location because your current Terrible Creek one just wouldn't quite fit if you all were to expand fully to the east, for example. Um, so this is, this is, um, so this is what we had proposed for y'all's sewers sewer service area in fifty years. And this is everything that's in your land use plan and septic that can be converted, omitting things like right-of-ways and planned open space. So, pardon me. Part of an asset management plan is risk analysis. So we just talked about growth, um, but there's also helping define what is the current state of your assets? So classic risk is what's known as you basically multiply likelihood of failure. You know, what is the condition of your pipes? How soon are they going to break? With the consequence of failure, which is, you know, how is this going to affect, affect your system when it does break? Is it near a waterway? Is it near a school? Um, one of our jokes is, do you have a museum with George Washington's bathtub, for example? Um, all of that impacts the criticality. And then what we did is that we took those great hydraulic model results and we added a third dimension that is basically taking into account the functional fit of an asset. Because you can have an asset that's an okay condition now, but based on growth, it will be undersized or underserving what is needed for that asset in the future. So using this three-dimensional methodology, um, pump stations are risky and it's important to measure how risky they are. If a tree falls on a force main, what happens to that flow? If something gets stuck, gets past the screens and the pump station breaks down, that's risky. That sewer is going to start backing up unless Mike's team can get a vacuum truck there instantly. So this intelligent planning over a ten, twenty and fifty-year timeframe, what these plots are showing is that this decreases the overall risk in your whole system over these key timelines. So this is, um, just for, just for the sake of showing you all numbers, you already know. Um, this is what your current CIP list looks like. As the result of this project, um, within ten years, here is what we are, we are recommending based off of our risk analysis and our hydraulic model. Um, the big one is decommissioning that, um, Brighton Forest Treatment Plants, putting in a more intelligently designed interceptor along Middle Creek. Um, there is this regional pump station that I've already referred to that replaces those three misbehaving pump stations. There's a standard line item for rehab, again, for replacing or patching up those pipes, particularly the ones before the moon landing. And then one of these, um, this Andrew Road Capacity Improvement. So Mike's team has already done a great job with data collection and rehab. They've found a collapsed pipe. They've cut out a lot of intruding tree roots that have been blocking pipes. So we have a suspicion that if they re-meter some key areas, this Andrew Road Improvement Area may not be needed. They may have solved it or on their way to solving it. So this is an interesting one. Um, that is definitely worth checking with some more data collection. So by twenty forty-five, um, I'm not going to read off all of these to you. We have a Lord of the Rings volume of a report that you can go through to read individuals. I kid. Um, you'll, you can just ask Mike, can he read it to you? Um, but a lot of these are based off of, you know, where are there smaller pump stations that were put in because of developments and where can they be replaced with more strategically planned out assets? And then by twenty seventy-five, this, um, includes more regional pump stations and then that, um, that proposed potential new treatment plant that's a little bit further out and could scoop up a little bit more sewer flows. So, um, just be, uh, this is funny because I was talking off mic slides on accident. The five percent poor condition, uh, five out of thirty lift stations already need to be replaced. Um, those top priorities is that Brighton Forest Plant, that new Sunset Regional, and then just overall optimizing your sewer network. So, um, next steps, which Mike and Heather and their team, they're fully aware of. They're already planning on more CCTV inspection to, you know, spot check where all of the sewer pipes are having condition problems, doing smoke testing. So the fire department's not here, but you should warn them, they're going to get calls when this happens. There's going to be smoke coming out of people's buildings. Um, more long-term flow monitoring because these are really great devices. Sort of like, you know, your smart watch, how that measures your pulse. Um, these flow metering devices measure the health of your system. So it tells you how you're doing on a good day and it tells you how your sewer, sewer system's doing on a not-so-great day. Um, and what that stressor is like and how much those values peak. Um, and then just for long-range planning, a big buzzword these days is digital twin. All of these digital files, like your risk analysis and hydraulic model, keep it updated. Keep it one-to-one with, um, everything you have in your GIS and your city works so that you can have something as smooth as like what NOAA has with their hurricane forecasts where you can get regular updates on these storm paths, for example. Um, that is the overall goal for things like sewer studies. It's not a one-and-done. It's something that you continuously maintain, continuously develop so that when you get that next development request, you say, aha, I know how this should go into my system. What's the long-term financial impact and what is the best path forward for? Okay, and I did your sides for you, Mike, so.
So in, in summary, um, we have really exhausted uh, a lot of, um, our planning over the last eighteen months. Uh, I mean, really a special thank you to our, our GIS team, uh, in helping, uh, identify and create our hydraulic model. Uh, you know, we had to, we, we always talked about pencils down. You know, when we started this study, it was thirty pump stations and now we have, you know, oh, forty, um, under development. And every time we talked to, to Nina and her team, it was changing, what's changing, what's changing? So, um, to just put some things, uh, in the study in perspective that, that we did already touch on, you know, you see four point six percent of gravity sewer system. Well, that's over ten miles of gravity sewer system, you know, that we need to strategically address. Updating our, our language, uh, for development, uh, to try to, um, discourage putting in pump stations. Uh, I know we discussed this a little bit during the town board retreat, um, and, and during the budget process. But that's, um, you know, where we spend, uh, you know, thousands of dollars every month on electricity, twenty-five thousand dollars a year on chemicals, that, you know, the crane trucks, the staffing, after-hour calls. So, um, you eliminate that pump station and its gravity and, um, inspect and maintain it. And it, it should last for a hundred years. Um, and so all, all of this said, the, uh, management and staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the town of Fuquay Varina's Wastewater Asset Management Plan as presented and recommended.
Mike, thank you for your, and what is, I don't know, thank you for your presentation and a few comments I want to make to you and questions with you at the same time. On, I think that we have to, one, we got free money from the federal government and so anytime you get free money from the federal government for a study, we'll, we'll take our, um, we'll take it. And I think we all recognize that we have parts of our systems that were shown here that are brand new and, and it's a small portion of it that is failing or can become problematic in, in the future on there. And our job is to manage the town's order, or in this case, not order, but sewer services for the future and set up for long time, long-term success. Um, I do think there's something, you know, and I'm in favor of, of, of the recommendation, but I, I'd make that with some comments that, one, I think some of it's easier said than done. I mean, converting septic to sewers, as we know, requires annexation. A lot of people have no interest in annexation, start paying town taxes and everything with it. So it's ea, it's easy to say it, but it doesn't necessarily happen as fast as we all would like here. Somebody's got to install an infrastructure for them to tag on to. It's easy when there's a line out front. When somebody's got ten thousand dollars in system development fees and the sewer ladder to the house, it goes real quick, not very cost-effective to them. So it takes a very long time to bring those people on board. And as we know too, we, we try to routinely update our development fees every year and we charge the maximum that state law will allow us for developers that we can not just get the new systems donated, but invest that money back in our systems and, and continue to improve them. Your team has done an incredible job on upgrading all of our professionalism on the management of that and where it is today and, and staying on track of those things right there. But I say all that because it's very expensive, just as we saw in the spreadsheets there showing the expense of these long-term plans and we've got to pay for them. And we can work on putting a, a plan together to pay for them over the long term. But I do think at the same time, it's going to be a slow and steady pace because I do not believe our rate users are going to tolerate any kind of additional increases right now. We've had a lot of increases with capacity that are going on with that. And so, um, I say that as we need flow and I understand the, why we like gravity better than pump stations. I think most builders and developers would rather have the reliability, consistency of a gravity system instead of a, a pump station. But if we're not careful too, then it's going to not have a pump station, not have something to get built. We have no flow and all of a sudden back to our users saying, we got to increase your rates. And so this chicken or the egg going in a circle a little bit, we don't want to be, be doing that. So I think we have to be very cautious on that aspect. As we know, um, the town with big regional, um, I forget the, the word you, you use them, but regional, um, this regional gravity lines, you know, taking stuff offline, the town can condemn. It's harder to, typically we, as a town, do not condemn for private development. We only condemn for town-related, if I say typical, we have never condemned for private development. We've always only done that for public purposes. And so, you know, it's easier said than done on some of these projects right there, I think. And I know you, you agree with that and, you know, I think that you do a good job with your staff too on requiring the SCADA system, the alarms that go into it, the technology that's not just in an old way, just you had a buzzing buzzer and hope somebody called the police department, the police department called y'all and somebody came and fixed it. But nowadays with the technology and the, and cellular connectivity, it makes it so you know, you, you, I think you most time know it almost before the alarm comes into you because you can see the flow changes on there. And, and the backup generators, if power's lost, it's a requirement to have a backup generator on every single pump station that goes in today. And so electricity is a major expense and your own gear-in cost. But on a monthly basis, if we lose power in these storms, nobody has, as a whole, has to worry about their toilets not flushing because everything's prepped for that. And so I appreciate this project and I believe that we will continue to upgrade all our system in the future with it. It's just, it's got to be a delicate balance of what the public's willing to pay for. And I think it was probably a billion, over a billion dollars worth of projects, well over a billion dollars worth of projects that were showed there. And town doesn't have a billion dollars right now to spend on anything. And I know it's a fifty-year horizon between, it's interesting, you put it, you know, there you showed future growth and that future growth paid for a lot of that too. And that's, that's true, but we try to delegate that balance with our system and paying for all our new stuff. So I say that with, um, I like the direction, I like what the study's saying, but we, I don't know how we're going to pay for it to happen right now.
Well, evaluate it on an annual basis.
That's right, exactly right. So thank you for that work. Thank you, ma'am, for your presentation too. That was very insightful here. Any other part of questions or comments from board members?
I kind of agree with some of the comments you made. I mean, long-term with the growth that we're seeing, we will be able to pay, um, pay for these improvements. The problem is, you know, you have landowners, they decide when they want to sell and, and their property and where it's going to be and we, we can't control that. Um, we've just done a really big project with putting, um, gravity lines in, uh, south of town where we're eliminating pump stations. And so to me, pump stations are kind of piecemeal, Band-Aids. And the future is taking them out and putting gravity lines. I, because I look at long-term, it's all going to be, or maybe not all, but it, we hope that it will be gravity line and that we'll have the customers out there. I wish we could get some partners that would help us, whether it was the county or the state, that would see, look, they can't, they aren't able to do this all up front. But long-term, it, it makes sense to try to put it in place. I wish we could find a partner that would help us get some of these gravity lines in place um, and not rely just on, uh, development to do it. But, you know, that's what we, that's what we wrestle with. The, um, inconsistency of development and paying for it and taxes and, and whatnot. So I'm thankful that we have the study and it's a complex issue.
That's for sure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one, one of the discussions or recommendations has been, or the ideas has been to, to develop regional partners and collaborate with other municipalities to see if they can help, uh, sort of, uh, curtail some of the direct expense. And that takes regional collaboration. We might have to rethink how we can do this, not just as an individual municipality trying to bear all of this weight because development impacts everyone around us. And to start having a conversation with our partners might be one way we can help subsidize the direct expense that it's going to take to get some of this done. And the regional collaboration is, is sometimes a method that, that some municipalities have, have embarked upon in order to help support the expansion and the rapid growth in a particular area. So that, that might be a conversation. I don't know, Mi, Mike, if you're familiar with any models of regional collaboration or not, but I'm sure if you, you've been in this business a long time, you know that at some point, that's what has to happen. Partners have to talk to each other because of the weight of trying to do these kinds of projects is just so heavy that we have to try to look at other options.
Mike, don't we currently have a partner already with Hornet County and cull on that facility and share the expense of everything going into sewer lines into Hornet County right now? Isn't that a partner?
Yes, a hundred and ten million dollar expansion project.
It's under construction right now with existing capacity expansion. So we're using partners already, but we'll continue to use those partners.
Yes.
And for the comments, not we intend a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We adopt the resolution approving the town of Fuquay Varina wastewater asset, asset management plan as presented and recommended.
Second.
Motion second on favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Administrative Report Ten B, Consultant Selection Police Department Needs Assessment and Feasibility Study. More information about agenda will be presented by Parks and Recreation Director Cox.
Good evening, boy.
Jonathan, good evening, man.
Good evening.
Welcome.
The purpose of this agenda item is to consider the selection of the best qualified firm for the police department needs assessment and feasibility study and authorize a town manager or designate to negotiate scope and fee. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one forty-three sixty-four thirty-one, town staff solicited requests for qualifications for architectural and engineering consultants for the police department needs assessment and feasibility study on June sixth. Town staff received nine RFQ responses from highly qualified architectural and engineering firms on July second. The RFQs were reviewed and scored by Se, Selection Committee consisting of Assistant Manager Matthews, Police Building, uh, sorry, Public Building Superintendent Kozinski, Police Chief Smith and Police Captains McDonald's, McDonald, Connolly and Walsh. Based on the scoring criteria established in the request for qualifications, four firms were invited to interview with the town. Considering the entire evaluation process, town staff determined Curry Engineering and Architect Design Group to be the most qualified team to complete the police department needs assessment and feasibility study. Curry Engineering and Architect Design Group was designated the best qualified firm due to extensive experience with similar projects, designated staff availability assigned to the project and a demonstrated understanding of the needs assessment process and project site. Management staff recommend the town board designate Curry Engineering as the best qualified firm and Stuart Cooper Newell Architects as the next best qualified firm to perform the police department needs assessment and feasibility study. Upon selection, management will work with Curry Engineering to develop a scope of work and fee that aligns with the police department needs assessment and feasibility study project identified in FY twenty-five budget. If acceptable scope and fee terms cannot be reached with Curry Engineering, town staff will move to negotiations with Stuart Cooper Newell Architects. As a fiscal note, upon the town board selecting the best qualified firm, management staff will attempt to negotiate a fair and reasonable price consistent with industry norms. management staff will attempt to negotiate a fair and reasonable price consistent with industry norms. Town management and staff anticipate bringing a negotiated scope and fee with terms to a future town board meeting. Funding of $117,780 was included in FY25 budget. However, funding was not rolled forward and will need to be appropriated in FY26 upon negotiation of an acceptable fee. The recommended motion tonight is designate Curry Engineering as the best qualified firm and preferred firm and Stewart Cooper Newell Architects as the next ranked preferred firm to perform the police department needs assessment feasibility study and authorize a town manager or designate to negotiate scope and fee. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Good about both these companies. One of them's a local company in Fuquay Varina, went through the bid process and, and the committee interviewed. And anytime I have opportunities to use local companies, I think that's great right there. You recommend it to be approved, so that's good. Any other further questions or comments?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Tell them to get to work, chief, pray for his police station, get done right. That's right, chief, thank you.
Item 10C, administrative report, Fuquay Varina Social District, Bengal Town Center. More information about this agenda will be presented by Assistant Town Manager Seymour. Jim, good evening.
Uh, Mayor and Board, good evening, always glad to be with you. So the purpose of my agenda item tonight is to, uh, consider, uh, recommend to the board that they consider establishing a new town social district over at the Bengal Town Center. I think everybody knows where this development is, located on Northeast Judd Parkway, My Way Tavern, JT's Creamery, a lot of, uh, the future home of the True By Hilton Hotel, and then currently two other buildings that are currently being reviewed by town staff, uh, site plans for additional retail and restaurant businesses. So, uh, the social, this social district has been requested by David Ball, the property owner, the property owner and manager of the Bengal Town Center. The new social district would be managed by the Bengal Town Center, Master Association, Owners Association Incorporated. Part of the state statute that allows local municipalities and counties to establish social districts also allows the local municipality or the county to designate a private property owner or private association to manage and operate the social district on behalf of the municipality. So it would still be a town social district, but we would designate the operation and management to, uh, David Ball's entity, the Bengal Town Center Master Association. So the social district, just a reminder, the town board approved its downtown social districts originally in March 2024. In December 2024, I brought to you an updated presentation to let you know after six months how the district had been operating. And at that time, we had expanded the boundaries of the social district and also the hours of operation for the social district. Currently, there are 68 municipalities throughout North Carolina that operate social districts. Uh, as of today, there had been no reported incidents in the towns downtown in the Varina and the Fuquay Social District. The social district would support businesses located in the Bengal Town Center, uh, mixed-use development. This horizontal mixed-use development, again, is expanding. I mentioned the future home of the True By Hilton Hotel. And not only that, but the My Way Tavern and the other restaurants that are currently there, restaurant and retail shops. One of the reasons why we're also recommending this is that the, these type of developments that we currently see on the ground, which Bengal Town Center is one of its first, but we've also recently approved several other horizontal mixed-use development projects like Vaughn Park and the Lock 7 Development, the Harvest District. So you're going to start seeing a lot more of these type of districts. But one thing that makes this unique and what we've encouraged in the other district, which is consistent with our land use plan that was adopted, is that this area, this development, the Bengal Town Center, has a dedicated outdoor gathering space, which would allow the developer to host business, excuse me, to host events and support the local businesses. But not only that, it also makes it a destination for the community and those that are interested in Fuquay Varina. Uh, the recommendation is for hours of operation, Monday through Sunday, every day, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, which is consistent with our existing downtown social district hours, which we expanded to in December. Prior to the operation, if approved by the town board, the town, myself, the police department will go out and inspect because again, we would be designating, uh, the Bengal Town Center management to operate the district, which means they will be responsible for installing the necessary signage, making sure that there's appropriate amount of trash and recycle receptors, and, uh, making sure that the appropriate signage notifications that have the police department, the ALI information and everything that is required by the social district prior to its operation to make sure that that has been installed accordingly. The police department will, of course, if approved and once operational, will be responsible for the enforcement side to make sure that everybody, uh, that participates in the social district, Bengal Town Center, following the social district rules and the local and state laws for consuming alcohol. What you see here is the Bengal Town Center and you see the area that is enclosed, the boundaries. I believe that is yellow or green, but that is the proposed social district boundaries. Again, where you see that L shape is the My Way Tavern, JT's Creamery, uh, the Thai Restaurant and the Meat House and other restaurants and businesses as well. And then that parcel to the south is the home of, of the future True By Hilton Hotel, which should be starting construction here very soon. And then the parcels to the left and right, which you see currently there are site plans being reviewed for more retail restaurant shops, uh, in that area. So at this point, at this time, uh, the requested district by David Ball, is that what you see? But also management's recommendation is this district as well. So the motion before the board tonight is one, to approve the recommended ordinance establishing the Bengal Town Center Social District, two, designate social district boundaries within the Bengal Town Center's district as indicated, three, establish the Bengal Town Center Social District hours of operation, Monday through Sunday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and then four, adopt the Bengal Town Center Social District, Social District Management and Maintenance Plan as recommended.
Thank you, um, Deputy Manager Seymour for that presentation right there. Um, just to summarize a few comments that you, you made earlier, this allows the existing businesses to be able to use some of the open spaces there and it's part of what the development was designed for and with that. Um, I know we get crime reports and update reports, but I heard you say earlier, there's been, um, no issues with social districts so far.
That is correct.
Okay, um, and everything's functioning as it was intended in both locations? So no, no years of crime, no concerns, nothing needs to be changed or done differently for here? This, this looks like it mirrors the existing rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and? Chief, any public, uh, management and staff recommend approval? Any public safety concerns? Okay.
I've reviewed and I have no concerns as the plan is being recommended tonight. And based on, it was mentioned, the operation of our current social districts, both downtowns, we've had no, um, observed violations or reported violations to us. So I have no reason to believe that if approved, this social district wouldn't operate the same as the two existing social districts.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief, for that comment right there. Deputy Manager Seymour, thank you for those comments. I, um, any further comments or discussions by board members?
We, um, go ahead. I, I'm just curious about the hotel. I know that we offered an incentive for that and I have not heard anything, uh, about it. Do we have an update on what's going on with the hotel?
Yeah, their construction plans were approved last week and you should start, you should see developments start very soon.
They got equipment on site, just delivered for a site work.
They broke ground today.
I was at the meat market next door and saw the bulldozers over there.
Okay, all right, well, good, I'm glad, that's, uh, that's an exciting project for us.
Are you, sir, are you in favor of this proposal? Okay, thank, you've done a lot of investment in our town too, so we appreciate that very much. Any further question or comments, Commissioner Adcock?
No, sir.
Commissioner?
Well, I'd like to speak for a few minutes about this. Um, I know that when the idea, the concept of social districts was first presented, it was presented primarily for the downtown area to stimulate economic viability and increase business traffic. Do you have any data to support that that has happened?
I don't have specific data in front of me or with me right now. That's information that we can get, but qualitatively, I can tell you that all businesses have been in favor of the social district. And again, reason for Mr. Ball's request is again, to make this a destination for people not only in town, but those outside of town as well.
But you have no quantitative data?
I do not right now, but I can get you that information.
Well, one, one of the concerns that I, and you, most of you know my position on social district because I've spent 25 years as a substance abuse, um, professional, and I know that my position is that the town not be in any way supporting any kind of thing that would either enhance or continue to promote consumption of alcohol. Uh, it seems as if in this particular situation, we are relegating the responsibility for a healthy and safe community to a private entity. What is the liability to the town in regards to, uh, that? Because we're talking about an area that's located to, next to a major corridor, Judge Parkway. And if there's any kind of indication of possibility of danger in regards to people probably driving intoxicated, it would be that area. In regards to crime, I, I don't think crime is a statistic that should be used to measure a social district only. I think that there are other factors that come into play when you look at the, the aspect of safety, not only downtown, but particularly in this area. So I, I raise those concerns that if we don't have any measurable data to say that this is a good thing to do and that it will stimulate business, why are we doing it, you know, at this particular point? I think that that's, that's the way, when we're making a decision like this, we need to consider those factors. Is it necessarily effective for us as a town? And what is the liability and what are the consequences that we might be placing on a private entity that certainly would be our responsibility as elected officials to the community?
So the enforcement, true with any social district as required by law, the enforcement of any, uh, any issue that occurs, it, it relies with the police department. We're not asking the private property owner to enforce the laws, uh, as far as the enforcement, if, if there are any violations. But what we currently do with our social districts, we have regulated that administration, operation and management to the FEDA to help us with, uh, getting the information out there to business owners. Our down, I'm sorry, the downtown development manager, uh, is responsible right now for making sure that the signage is up, that businesses are compliant with it, uh, the rules of the social district, that the appropriate signage and the appropriate stickers are up, making sure that businesses have the appropriate, uh, labeling for the cups. And so what we are doing with this recommendation is, uh, providing that information and providing that criteria to David Ball's organization, the Bengal Town Center, uh, Management Association, so they can do that on our behalf. But again, if there are any violations, that resides with the police department as it would with any other alcohol violation throughout the community. But as far as, uh, making sure that the businesses have the appropriate cups, that they have the appropriate logos or not logos, uh, labels and that businesses are participating in that, yes, we are, uh, regulating that to the association, uh, the Bengal Town Center Association, which again, is allowed by state statute.
And, and to add one clarification, what is being delegated, uh, under this proposal is the marketing and operational responsibilities of the social district. The law enforcement functions, uh, still rests with the Fuquay Varina Police Department and ALI. Those are the two agencies that are responsible for legal accountability for any violations of alcohol, uh, if severe enough, could even jeopardize a business's ALI license. And so those in this proposal do not get delegated to any third party. They remain with the responsible governmental entities.
As far as enforcement is concerned, correct?
Correct.
Yes, and enforcement and penalties.
The town will still put on its website as required by law, the district boundaries, if, if the social district is approved, just like we currently have on the town's website, the, the hours of operation, the operation management plan, the resolution adopted by the town board, and of course, the rules and regulations that everybody must abide by for the social district.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this issue until we can, uh, secure quantitative data to show the effectiveness and impact of social districts here at Fuquay Varina.
Go ahead, um, may I make a motion? Does anybody want to second that? I think they've made a motion, there's a motion on the table. Motion dies like a second. Charlie, uh, your thoughts for this proposal?
Um, uh, Mr. Ball that brought this forward is, in my opinion, one of the, uh, best friends of Fuquay Varina that we have when it comes to development. Um, a lot of the, uh, our medical corridor, uh, um, uh, where he, near where his CPA office is, uh, was done by him. Uh, he's a member of our Fuquay Varina Downtown Association and I think is probably one of the best members that they have there as far as raising money. And to me, he's, this is a, uh, successful development. He's brought us the first, um, uh, what I would call a, uh, Class A hotel, uh, to our town that we desperately need. And he has come to us and said that this is something that he thinks will help his development. And to me, that's the, enough data for me. Uh, we have, um, instituted this in our downtown areas. I have not seen negative consequence for it. Um, I want to help out, uh, Mr. Ball on the request because I think he is doing what he thinks is in the best interest of this development. And frankly, for the town, um, I think it will spur, uh, I, I agree with him that I think it will spur, uh, the activity center there. Um, those are my opinions. I respect, uh, Commissioner Harris and his position on it, but we just differ on it. But that's, uh, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner, I think that's very well, um, but would you like to make a motion?
If you'd like me to, I will make a motion to approve, um, number one, approve the recommended ordinance establishing the Bengal Town Center Social District and two, designate social district boundaries within the Bengal Town Center districts as indicated. And three, establish Bengal Town Center Social District hours of operations, Monday through Sunday, 12:00 PM, uh, to 10:00 PM. And four, adopt the Bengal Town Center Social District Management Maintenance Plan as recommended.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Motion carries, four to one.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, other business managers report, Assistant Town Manager Matthews. Mark? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Switch, before we switch to that right there, before Mr. Ball leaves here tonight. Thank you for your investments, I was mentioning that earlier, but thank you for your investments in our community that you've continued to do and great, great resources and your involvement and, um, FEDA. I know you've been involved with a variety of organizations in town and the investments have made a difference in our community. Our citizens use and they're leased and they enjoy new restaurants, new shopping opportunities in each of those. So thank you for your continued investment too. Thank you. Assistant Town Manager Matthews, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, several updates tonight. Of course, uh, you were able to see, uh, earlier, before I get into the other police and fire updates, that it's, it is not often that any community gets to recognize their police department and fire department for being recognized for, for, for meeting the highest level of operational excellence in their field. It's a great night for recognizing public safety in Fuquay Varina.
Night.
Uh, some other updates, uh, there were several staff recently promoted in the police department to support the internal reorganizations planned for, uh, in this fiscal year budget. Ross Cooper, Daniel Look and Patrick Parker were promoted to sergeant. Brett Kane was promoted to lieutenant and Cassie Redman was promoted to telecommunications supervisor. All of these were effective August tent, so some exciting news in the police department. A new officer Frederick Miller, uh, was sworn in taking his oath of office yesterday. And, uh, also this past weekend, grilling and chilling in the park was a success with a number of community members showing up to partner with the police department. Uh, they were able to distribute 700 backpack, or several hundred backpacks, uh, full of school supplies to children. Uh, some of the community partners included Church Alive, Pine Acres Community Center, Commissioner Hands, Bengal University. So like to express our appreciation for their partnership. The fire department, uh, also has, uh, some news since the last town board meeting was the Local Heroes Breakfast where, uh, firefighter two Riley Prince was recognized and presented the Local Heroes Award for Fire. Uh, John Michael, uh, Fackrell was promoted to fire captain this week and will have his badge pinned in an upcoming town board meeting. Battalion Chief Dwayne Blaylock attended a six-day commanding control class at the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland last week. The class highlighted and refined students' abilities to manage multifaceted emergency scenes and included students from all over the country. So excited to see the lessons that Dwayne brought back to our community as our fire department gets even better at managing scenes. Also, five firefighters and officers recently attended the South Atlantic Fire Rescue Expo at the Raleigh Convention Center last week, participating in mute, in multiple educational sessions taught by instructors from up and down the East Coast. In addition, one of the new engines of our fire department was on display and attracted a lot of attention and interest. You may be hearing from some of your colleagues around the state that are just a little bit jealous about the Fuquay Varina red. Captain Sean Freeman, firefighter Joe Thiem and firefighter Andrew Spain recently attended the First U Operations Conference in Carolina Beach, where they participated in three days of intense hands-on training from nationally recognized instructors on advanced engine and ladder company fire ground operations. This is all about continuing to get better at what we do. Finance Department has a, an update where Morgan Whittaker was recently promoted to the accountant one position. And staff are also have been very busy preparing to meet with the local government commission as well as the rating agencies in the next week and a half, in advance of selling the remaining $10 million in voter authorized transportation bonds. The Arts Center is in its final week of summer camps. Partial offerings for the fall theater season can be found on the Arts Center website, aiming to have the final performances listed this week. And the theater brochure should be available next week, so be on the lookout for opportunities to get those Arts Center tickets because they go fast. Fall classes, dance team rehearsals, community theater events have all been under, or rehearsals for community theater have all gotten underway. And Nutcracker auditions will be taking place Saturday, September 6th at 9:00 AM, if you know any dancers in the community that want to participate. The Parks and Recreation has a number of events that I'll outline, but of course, the Follow Me to Fuquay Varina concert series will be kicking off September 4th with the Band of Oz and the Food Truck Rodeo on September 7th with the Magic Pipers. That'll be in the Varina parking lot. The inspections Department has an update where Chris Thompson passes mechanical level three state exam, and Justin Daniel recently passes electrical level two. So continuing to get additional certifications that will help them add even more value to our inspections department. Public Utilities, Jose Perez started as a utility locations technician, Ashley Parker started as a water distribution operator, and Dwight Parrish was promoted to pump maintenance crew leader in Public Utilities. In our Planning Department, we've got some sad news where Assistant Planning Director Melissa Sigmund, sad for us, good news for, for her. She's taken a position as a community development director for the city of Woodstock, Georgia. And so we'll miss her, but it's a good personal and professional opportunity for Melissa, so we wish her well. In our Engineering Department, the final NCDOT acceptance of the Judd Parkway and Giraud intersection operational improvements is anticipated this week. Also, the Austin Ridge Greenway Trail has scheduled a pre-construction meeting for next week and is anticipated to begin construction in early September. And we have a few items listed, just upcoming events, Coffee with a Cop, Hilltop Needmore Town Park Community Center on Wednesday, September 4th, 9:00 to 10:30 AM. Already mentioned the Follow Me to Fuquay Varina Concert on September 4th and Food Truck Rodeo. We'll have our 9/11 National Day of Remembrance on September 11th, 8:30 AM at Fire Station Four. The second Follow Me to Fuquay Varina Concert will be Liquid Pleasure. And that'll be Thursday, September 11th. International Festival is going to be exciting. Slate of performers and food vendors will be, will be surrounding the Arts Center. Most of the activities inside, food outside on September 13th, so be on the lookout for that. The Arts Center, 11 to 3. We do have the first reading of a town code amendment, Land Development Ordinance Amendment 30 is first reading included in your agenda packet, and a zoning map amendment, Bob Wiggins' Madme Holmes 5202 Spence Farm Road. So those are available for your review as those will be going before the planning board and coming up in the upcoming weeks. Those are all the updates I have, and no closed session is recommended for this evening.
Thank you, seeing Deputy Town Manager. Glad for that information, appreciate it. Commissioner Harris, any comments?
Oh, just briefly, this past Sunday, I had an opportunity to attend the, and celebrating India's Independence Day at the town of Moritzville. And it was a great occasion. The, the India has said is one of the pure democracies, and I think it's 75 years or more years of age as far as its independence from Great Britain. And that celebration was a great celebration. It was very inspiring to see the participation from all members of the community in regards to the celebration. Wasn't able to make the chill, the chill thing at Fleming Loop. I got there about 30 minutes before closing, but I saw that that was an outstanding event too. I was able to speak to the chief and Commissioner Haynes, who did a well, a great job in organizing. So just want to thank you for that, really appreciate it. And I'd just like to make one other comment in regards to my remarks earlier. And this is a concern of mine that I have, I think that the challenge is to, for, for the business community, and I support the business community, but to tie consumption of alcohol to a successful business, that's not necessarily, that's, that's, they are in juxtaposition to each other. And, and the point that I want to drive home as an addiction professional, that we don't necessarily, it doesn't have to be that way. An effective business is going to be a business that runs anyway, no matter what. And I don't think we have to tie necessarily a, a social district location to a successful business. So I want members of the business community, even based on my position, to know that I do support the business community, but I think in this situation, we really have to look at the efficiency and effectiveness of what we're doing, as well as the overall responsibility, I believe, that I have for the safety and health of our community. And I think that that's an issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Echols, any comments?
Uh, yes, I wanted to relay a story, it's similar to one I've, I've probably talked about maybe a year or so ago. But I met a very nice couple last week, and they are building a house in Fuquay Varina. These, this is a retired couple moving from Pennsylvania. And whenever I meet somebody that's moving to Fuquay Varina, I always try to find out why. And normally, it's either a job or their children are here. These folks, the, had done lots of research, and they did not come here for a job or for family, they came here solely for, to retire. And they researched, they said they narrowed it down to two places, Greenville, South Carolina, and Fuquay Varina, North Carolina. And the one item that the, the, that they said brought it home, that caused them to choose Fuquay Varina, was how safe of a town we were. And so when we get these rainy rankings of safest place in North Carolina, that's a huge deal. We are, it's the second time I've met a couple that has moved here for that reason. And I think having the, you know, we want to have the safest town regardless, but it's a great economic development tool. And so I'm just thankful that we, as a town, have such a first-class police department. I want to, I want to thank you for that. The other comment I'll say, at the beginning of this meeting tonight, I think you're going to have to get some more coins printed up because you gave out about a, a whole terms worth in one meeting. But they were all well deserved. And it was said in some of the comments tonight, but we are blessed in this town, and we are blessed to have the employees that we have here, and a community that just really loves each other and loves this town, and I'm blessed to be part of it as well. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree with that, Commissioner Echols. You know, we try to save the coins for when there are significant events, and, and so, you know, we had a lot of significant events right here tonight that deserved recognition for that. And not seeing other events that we don't have are less recognizable, but you know, we try to keep them for different, different events on that. And, you know, being a, a safe town with these two depart, these two departments that keep us safe here, and many departments in our town keep us safe, but with our police and fire departments keeping us safe. And people moving to town, people living in a safer area, they don't want to go live somewhere that's dangerous and like some other places I could think of, I won't name names, name names of other communities out there, but we like being a safe community, that's for sure, so thank you.
Your Honor? Danger?
I mean, I'm trying not to name other mayor's towns around here, stuff like that. I'd probably go a little bit further north and west, but you know. Ask if you would like to, to be reminded of any of these towns, just simply our crime reports, we'll tell you where these bad guys come from, and they're driving through our town from these other bad towns. And I go with a special change.
We, we better, yeah, we got.
Oh, Lord.
Anyone wants, hey, they're all not as safe as us, as good as that.
That's right. On that note, Mr. Watts, what's your thinking?
I, I got two comments tonight, one short, one a little bit more lengthy, but I'll start with the short one. The short one is, on Tuesday, attended another meeting with the Fuquay Varina High School 50th Anniversary Committee. And I'll tell you, this is going to be one exciting school year. They, they are really going to town on planning things throughout the year, and they're going to be publishing their list of things that they will be doing, including not only athletics, but other organizations throughout the school. They've also, in cooperation and conjunction with the museum, have put up exhibits in the school of the history. So this is celebrating 50 years of Fuquay Varina High School, but we know there's more to Fuquay Varina High School than 50 years. And so they have exhibits of the history of schools in Fuquay Varina, all very important, significant history that is being prominently and displayed, but also thanks to the museum to be able to get those artifacts, because these are some really exciting artifacts. So I certainly appreciated seeing it, I, you know, and, and hope the students will. And, but they want to have the public in to, toward the school and, and be involved in these types of things. So that was, that was my briefer comment, but my more, my lengthier comment is an idea that I wanted to present tonight and share with the board. In 2017 or 2018, I've been on the board for a while, so I cannot remember, but around that time, I had presented an idea about having an outdoor fitness area with nautilus-like equipment, where people, the public could come and exercise and do it outdoor with weatherproof equipment. And I discussed it with the board, and the challenge back then in, in that year was that it was just, it was very expensive to do. And then, of course, you can't just have the equipment, but you have to have something to put the equipment on. And, and this was, this, my vision with this was more, you know, weightlifting and, and basically giving more of an option than, than the community center had. Well, since that time, of course, we now have the fantastic Hilltop Needmore facility where you can weightlift as well. And so we've got, we're, we're covered there, and, and I know people are thoroughly enjoying it. I had a modified idea though, that I wanted to present to the board tonight. This modified idea is a proposed five-station fitness circuit with the trails that we have on the horizon and that we have, and with South Park. I think our town could really benefit from a five-station fitness circuit, and this would be something we could put along the trail, or we could put in the playground. But this would be something, not necessarily doing weightlifting, but for example, and I've just typed up some notes, a pull-up chin-up station, a station one, a station two, a dip push-up station, station three, a core sit-up station, four, a cardio step-up station, and then a balance agility station. And when I was doing some research on this, I, I saw that this is, this is the type of thing that we could do in the 20,000 to maybe as high as $30,000 range. And I felt like this could be very impactful for our town to have free usage of this along maybe one of our trails or in our parks, but not be the expensive burden of what I proposed back in 2017 or 2018, where we're having to invest in equipment that is expensive and, of course, maintain that. And so I wanted to propose that, I, I, it, it was something that I had a real passion for, and as the board knows, I've always been very passionate in my time on the board about parks. And, and I feel like this is something that we could get a lot of benefit out of, and the benefit could far, very well far exceed the price of it. I have, today I called and presented it to Jonathan as an idea of something to look into. I'm not looking to make this happen, obviously, today, but I would love it to be something that would be considered. It's, it's, what I see is a, you know, just something that, that I had a vision for, that I felt the community could really benefit for, but we could now do it in a manner that would promote fitness, that would promote the outdoors, but not be such a tremendous and burdensome type of, uh, uh, cost on the town. One thing that has changed, I think, that since I proposed, other than now, you know, we've got a lot of weightlifting, we got more weightlifting opportunities, is that we're getting these trails and greenways and since 2017, 2018. So this is just something I, I wanted the board's, you know, thoughts and to consider and to, I would love our wonderful director, Jonathan, to look into, to be able to present with the, you know, specifics about what we could do, you know, more of a shoestring budget, and not, not to take away from anything of the appearance or how it would look, but that I think for the, what we need to accomplish in this process could be done a lot more expense, inexpensively with this type of non-weight and cardio type of exercise. And so that's what I wanted to present to the board. It's been on my heart and mind, and, and so that's what I wanted to present tonight.
You definitely, Jason, have been passionate about parks and rec always, and, and including your, your right memory on that. And, you know, we've got a lot of projects in our five-year plan that have all been kind of funded and put into, into motion. And there is a, it seems like every single project comes forward is above budget too, you know, sort of digging, digging deeper and deeper in the well on those types of things. You know, we did recently approve master plans with some of these parks, the Community Center, South Park, getting re, that proposal's coming up to us, I believe, or a future meeting for that contract on there, on getting that redone there. I mean, Mark, I think my comments, curious what your, what management stance is on it, but I think probably what I would think is that, you know, you continue to evaluate all our programs as we're moving forward, and let's, you know, see how, how projects are looking, how they're tracking, and you know, does, how y'all can look at this type of, of project and things like that. What are your thoughts on those things?
Absolutely, we'll have master planning opportunities coming up with Willow Springs Elementary School adjacent park. There, there will be other updates, facility master plan. Of course, we'll be beginning the budget process shortly, so this is good information that we, I can ask Jonathan to do some additional research to identify what, you know, suitable locations may be and what the cost might be to explore this type of amenity and, and where it could fit within the, the park system and the capital budget plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mark.
That physical activity could be expanded for our, our greenways, you know. That physical activity could be expanded for our greenways, you know. I think there was maybe a long time ago, a proposal to have, you know, a little, like, exercise, you know, a little, you know, a little kiosk or something that would give you, like, if a mother and her kids were out walking on our greenway, so they could, you know, have a little physical exercise. I just think we could explore that, and because everybody can't even afford just a small amount to go to our gym, which is such a deal, such a great deal, but lots of individuals could do something like this on their own, just using park...
Got a lot of projects now there, that's right. I'll move back to Commissioner.
You know, we kind of get into the mode, and I think, I think rightfully so, of long-term plans and looking at big projects. But from time to time, I think, you know, if a board member has a good idea, and it is a, you know, not a project that's going to break the bank, but it is a reasonably-priced project, it's a good idea, sometimes we need to try things. And this, to me, Jason, Commissioner Watts brought this up, I didn't know when, but I remembered it being years ago, eight years ago.
It's been a while.
And I think it's worthwhile pursuing. And if he's already talked to Jonathan, and Jonathan can come back to us with some sort of a, an idea or solidified recommendation, I will support Commissioner Watts on this because I know it's been a passion of his for years. To me, it makes sense because it's a small-scale kind of thing that we can, I think we need to be experimenting with some of these things, because it may end up being the greatest thing ever, and we may end up putting them all over town in different greenways or wherever. So I'm very much in support of the idea. I like it, and I'm glad he's pushing for it.
Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner Adcock. All right, we'll look forward to chatting on that some more then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jason.
Very much.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Along with talking about greenways and everything, I've had so many people thankful of our Austin Ridge connection to Bass Lake Park. I ran into some runners actually before our Grilling and Chilling event, and they were so thankful and they're excited to see that connection. They were saying, I come out and run with them, and I told them, after three miles, you're going to have to call EMS for me. But, but they're really excited about that, as well as I've been getting calls all day, just people excited and happy that the road has been paved on 42 West Academy Street downtown, where we've had the bumpy ride for a while. So people were really calling all day, excited about seeing that part of downtown paved. The Local Heroes Breakfast was awesome this year. It really was, a lot of well-deserving people from all these different agencies, which is amazing. It was a great spirit and a high spirit the whole morning. Definitely all the sponsors who gave their little spill as well, and why they support this, this great initiative. So that was amazing. Definitely, you know, as we were all coming here, definitely want to pray for that family, the motorcyclist who passed, who, who passed a day earlier in the town. So definitely want to pray for their family. When I, I know as I left, they were still trying to identify and get the next of kin, but definitely pray for that family. And then lastly, you know, we had a great time on Sunday, definitely, you know, thank the police department and Church Alive for partnering, and we all came together months back and just was throwing this idea around of how we can all come together to make some type of back-to-school event. And, you know, definitely Captain McDonald, Sergeant Look, and Pastor Scooter Glenn from Church Alive, we all came together and been meeting for months. And then also, we packed all these backpacks, and we also set aside backpacks to go to all 12 of our schools, to our SRO officers, so to make sure in their offices, they have those backpacks if kids need them when they get back to school, as well as supplies going, a box of supplies going to all the 12 schools. So that was a great thing we did as well while we were planning for this event. And also, I think that's a, and definitely thank Parks and Rec for working with us. We got that one weekend that they were free from all activities to make this event happen. But I think it's an opportunity to see how it was set up, how we can possibly do some other events at Fleming Loop, how it was set up, and it kind of had a nice flow, and it still had enough parking for everybody to come out and enjoy the event. So I think that's another opportunity where we can find some ways to use Fleming Loop a little bit better outside of just athletics, to do some type of programming when it comes to some type of concert or anything. So that's another thing. So I think that was a great thing that we looked at after that, and people are already asking, are we doing it next year? So we got some planning to do, so. And lastly, just, you know, long-term, like Commissioner Adcock said, you know, we're always focused on that long-term planning, but it's really needed as, you know, you talk to other municipalities all around the state, and, you know, they, and I brag about our town on our focus on long-term investments to our infrastructure, because many of them are working on, they're just looking at three years down the road, five years down the road. And I'm like, we're looking at 30 and 50 years down the road. So just to see that investment and that focus on that, to make sure that we have this infrastructure in place for the growth that, you know, we can't stop, but it's going to come. So making sure we have that is just amazing, just, and like you, like everybody said, we're just blessed to, you know, be in a town and a community that's focused on that, as well as having, you know, top public safety and just people all down the line for our, all of our departments, and we're just thankful for that. I know everybody on the board is thankful for all the, all the work they do on a daily basis to make, make us look good, honestly. So definitely thank each and every one of y'all. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes, well said. Mayor Brooks and Gardner?
Well, this was such an amazing night. What a celebration with, we were, the, it was our, all local heroes tonight, just about. It was just amazing. I'm glad you had coins for all of them, because it was wonderful to see so many people celebrated tonight. And Charlie was talking about the people, these people he had talked to who said, you know, that we're talking about what brought them here. As a Realtor, I hear a lot, you know, from people who, you know, why they've come here and, or what they liked when they came back. Sometimes it's people who've just been through this town and liked it when they came, and then they came back, when they're looking for somewhere to live. And they, they almost all say they love the people. And tonight, we celebrated the people and then the safety, you know, a real, our major quality of life issue. So it was really wonderful. The national night out was fun with the police department. It was a great job. Every year, it gets even better, I think. And it looks like you all probably have a little bit of fun with it, too. It really did look like...
You gotta push some more funds for more hot dogs. I got beat up about those hot dogs.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right. They were telling us we needed to give them more food to have more hot dogs. The Local Heroes Breakfast was, it was very moving and amazing. And particularly our, our police officer, who was, was one of the ones honored, and he had his seven-week-old baby there. And it just lets you, reminds you that, you know, why we do this is, you know, that, that's one of the reasons, the future leaders and citizens of this town. So it was a great, a really great way to start a day. Also, the, I'm sorry that David has left, but his Bingle Town Center is really taking off. We've been recently to a ribbon-cutting at that meat market there, and it was just so interesting. It was really, it's just more getting ready. We're going to, when we get that hotel, when it gets in here, we're going to have businesses to support it already. One of the agents in our office that moved here from Florida had started a small business in Florida, he and his wife, and wanted to do that here, and they have now opened Mahana Fresh, and that's opened in the last week. And that area over there, every time I go, there's a new vendor over there, a new business or a new restaurant. So I'm glad that, that is really on the rise right now, I think, and I'm excited to see that, too. And tomorrow, I think we will start seeing more about McGwally's, and that's another exciting thing in this town. There's one thing, one other thing I want to talk about, about tomorrow, but, or Thursday, but North Carolina, our, our Fuquay Varina downtown has been going through an accreditation process, too, for national accreditation as a Main Street community. And our office, our main, our downtown office has to put that report together, and everything that they are doing to promote our downtown area and to support shopping local, to support our local businesses downtown, all of the things that they do have to be quantified in a number sense for this report they have to put in. And she distributed that at our last meeting, and I will get you a copy for the record for, because it is amazing when you see it in numbers, the investment, both private and public, in our downtown areas, and a lot of the statistics you want to see on the success of some of the programs that we've worked for, Bill, you will see in numbers. So I will ask for that to be a part of the official record of my comments of this meeting. And I'm really proud of the, the record that they have put forth. You know, we don't know yet if we get a credit, have gotten accreditation, but I expect that we will, because we've had it a long time and we work hard for it. The only other thing I have is that annually, we celebrate Women's Equality Day in Wake County with the League of Women Doters, and for the last few years, it's been held on the Dix Park campus at the chapel there, and that will be this Thursday, and they celebrate the women elected, elected officials for the county at all levels. And I just want to thank this town for the opportunity to be one of those, because it's pretty exciting and rewarding, and this is a really special event to go to, to be with the other women from across the county, in state government also, that, you know, it's a really exciting event, and I, I thank you all for the opportunity to do that. So that's all I have.
Well, you're my favorite woman on this town board, that's for sure. I promise you, Mayor Brooks, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. A few comments, kind of echo a few, a few things that we have discussed here to, today, though. Did swear in a new police officer yesterday, welcomed Fred to our police department, and he's going to do a great job right there, excited with his family on that. Friends of the Arts had a great event, Maureen, at the art center about two weeks ago, this past Saturday. And you've got a lot more events coming up this fall that are going to be well-attended and great, and a national festival coming up in each of those things. So it's always good when you have awareness, the community comes out there and supporting it, too, and all the neat art projects they had in there. And, and then the kids have an opportunity to do it. My kids enjoyed it, and said all the other ones I saw in there. So your team and the volunteers, everybody did a excellent job that day, too. The, I know most of us up here bragged about being the number one, one of the top safest communities in Fuquay Varina, people moving here, but I, but it's exactly right with our police and fire departments, right, they're keeping us safe. We have insurance ratings coming down in a good way. The lower numbers are better way. Police Department being accredited, too. I mean, these are great things that we continue to be bragged about in our community and stay very, very proud. Grilling and chilling was a big success on Sunday. Branda did order no rain for a change, much as it's been raining lately, Chiefs also, and so that part worked out nice for each, each, each and all of it, too, and turned out to be great right there. And so, yeah, there's points I want to take, make a point of tonight. So thank you all for being here tonight, and we're, no further comments.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
We're adjourned.